Things are telling me, I mean either way. I got this call over here. So I hired everybody. I told her truth the week before the thing. I said, "This is still there in a couple of weeks." They don't come back like they did. She's trying to get baby shower. There was a little. I felt so bad. But it's easy to play good cop, bad cop. And that's true. I'll be in the back.
When I start to get your price, you go in the back.
Call me, Mayor. Let's record and collect all council members present. Moving to the department reports, starting with code.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just picking out a few of the highlights from the report. We had a total of 100, I mean 1,083 calls in the code office. We did 55 utility inspections. Which, in that same month, I think, we did away with those 16 code inspections. And we had 319 business license renewals in the month of January. Let's see, further down, the city marshal removed 18 signs from the roadway. He located four businesses operating without a business license. And he investigated three tampering cases with the two citations issued. If you have any questions about anything else contained in the report, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, any questions, Patrick? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Electric and telecom, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, like everyone else, we used a lot of kilowatt hours last month. It was up 17,473,028. That's a record for us for the past several years. Actually, it's a record for us. The bill was lower than a million, too. Top user is 700 gigs. 154 above 200 peak use at 965. We're still exploring different ways to lower that. I think David's coming up with a solution that hopefully we'll be able to tell y'all something about next month. Items of interest, the first thing of interest I want to talk about is not on here, but I want to thank the other departments, especially the water, sewer, gas, and the public safety for helping us during the storm the other day. Police Department, police and fire department kept us fed. Robbie and his guys kept phones answered. It was a great help. Really want to say thanks for all that. Georgia Power, about some vegetation compliance I want to make y'all aware of. Right behind the Arc Gill, there is a sycamore tree that will have to be removed. It has grown up into the guy wires of the 46K line feeding our substation. It is a FERC federal compliance issue, and there is no question about its removal. There is an oak tree in front of Ms. Malton's office that is probably going to have to be removed. Again, it's a FERC issue. We will look at replacing those trees with a more, a tree that will meet the FERC compliance. That will happen over the next month or so. That is, again, if Georgia Power is taking care of it. They just want to make us aware of it. We started meeting with the Georgia Fiber Owners Group over the past couple of months. I think it's really moving forward to be something that could be good for us and all the other possible members. It's basically small fiber owners from North Georgia. Which is a consortium of a couple of EMCs down to Parker Fiber Net, trying to consolidate and use our whole footprint to keep our costs down in buying bandwidth and buying right of way or transport. And that's actually moving forward very well. And we started the external testing of phone system, and our port date is next, the 11th, next week. So the new phone system for the utilities will be on, hopefully, more than likely for the rest of the city office. This too will be on on the 11th. The new phone system being placed. Done a lot of work on it. It's got some real neat features. Hopefully it'll help in our customer service issues. If you have any other questions, I'll take them there.
Brian Halt Tribune's here. Cost of our electricity.
Yes, sir.
Based on average of what it's been, it's been about $800, $800, $900,000.
About that.
That's 1.2 something.
Well, actually, it's a little more than that. We did MEAG and T did a trade, a swap with some gas line capacity that lowered that cost a little bit. But it's still, you know, it's 1.2 instead of 800,000.
Right. So, I mean, we went up another 30, 40% in the cost of electricity. It's our cost.
Our cost.
It's the city's cost.
The city's cost.
Okay, I just wanted that to be clear.
And Mayor just to be real clear about that is, we can't be late with that. It's, we pay that in 10 days, or it's 18%.
Right, okay. Hope Tribune will do us pretty good on that.
It's some of that due to demand as well.
Oh, it's demand. It's all the demand. There's no, you've got to thank Ms. Scott that this January was 30% colder than last January. 90% of our customers have heat pumps. Heat pumps only work, even the newest heat pumps only work now at around 32 degrees when the heat strips come on. Heat strips are resistive heat inside the air handling unit that produce heat. Well, if you've got days, we had days we never got above freezing in January. If you never get above freezing, those heat strips are on all day long. And that resistive heat uses a lot of kilowatt hours. Now, you know, I've had some customers that I've talked to say, "Why should we just get rid of that heat pump?" Well, no, because 99% of the time in Georgia, the heat pump is the most efficient way to heat and cool your home. It's just those real cold days that you're going to pay for, those real cold months. You've got to think, this couple of month period was the coldest we've had in 25 years. So nobody really remembers this type of cold for the extended period of time that we had.
Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Thompson? Now, we'll move on to the finance department.
Thank you, Mayor. While we're on that subject, I just want to say that I've got Trace Walton. Staff now, she's been with us for a couple of weeks. And she's going to be working on some reports, dealing with some of these kind of things and how our rates compare to some of the other rates. And we'll come back with some of that information, maybe possibly next week. I don't know exactly when we'll have that information, but she's working on some of that, and we're glad to have her. She's working on marketing and some websites and the social media things. And then later we'll be working in dealing with some of the customer issues, public awareness with the PSC that's required and that kind of. Back to our performance indicators. Brian had mentioned the new phone system, and we're really excited about getting that in. It looks like the way it's going to work, we'll be able to split off a lot of the incoming calls so that if you've got a service issue, it will go directly to the call center. It will not go into the call queue. And then the ladies that are normally dealing with customers and answering phones at the same time won't be dealing with those type of calls. And hopefully we'll cut down on some of the and calls that we're seeing. So we're anticipating that helping a tremendous amount to take some of the load off the ladies. If you'll remember, I'm down about three employees in that department when we came in Monday. We were just absolutely slammed. I could see the traffic lined up through the drive-through before I could get down even close to the building. So hopefully that'll help that some. But there again, today was a very slow day. So, you know, we don't see a need right now to increase the staff back up to where it was as long as, you know, everybody will be patient with us. If you go on down, the extensions requested are running about normal. They're up to, we're up to 704 during the month of January, which was a high. Looks like 664 the previous month. We finished our field work, the audit field work, right now preparing draft statements and the stats, and hopefully be getting out something very soon on that. And the local auction sales tax for January was up considerably, but that, of course, is due to the holiday sales. And clinic utilization that percentage is running over 100% or was in January. I noticed last week it was down to about 85%. We have increased the number of hours and hopefully opened it up, some of the appointments, so that the employees can go there. On the financials, these numbers are draft numbers, but they should be very close to what we'll be ending in. It looks like fund balance in the general fund, we will have an increase, which is a really good thing. And it's around 782,000, increase in fund balance. All the departments seem to have come in pretty close to what was budgeted. We had a couple of things that were over, but we were able to do the budget amendments, which you'll see that are on there for the resolution to be approved next week. We did those budget amendments, did not have to use fund balance. We were just able to realign some of the departments that were way under and some that were just barely over, just realign those line items. So we're really proud of the staff for having pulled that off. So, and I think that's about it, unless anybody else has any questions.
I have two things. One is, I really may have to hear you explain about the phone system helping with the abandoned call. Is there a target number for what the abandoned call rate should be? And is there a way of with the new phone system monitoring that?
There's a way of monitoring a tremendous amount of data. And, like I said, there
There's a lot more tracking data. Right now, our existing phone system only tracks a call once a person picks it up. So if you get in the queue, we can't track that call. The new phone system will track it from the second it rings, or anything picks it up with its computer, whatever, to basically cradle to grave, is what we call it. Now, I would say zero is the target for drop calls.
I wouldn't think you want zero, but that means you're probably upstairs.
Right, but you know what I mean. We want everybody's call to get answered.
We're trying to work on tiers and levels so that we can direct people if they've got if they want to pay online.
It'll take you automatically to that.
You know, we've got that voice message if they want to pay by phone. It'll take them directly to that. So hopefully, we're going to be able to answer people's questions by them getting that voice. We've listened to several others that have utilities and how they've got it set up and are trying to. But I understand that it may be a work in progress.
Well, it's going to be a work in progress.
But hopefully, we can, you know.
My thing, what we're nice is the end with being able to point a call where it needs to end before it gets, like, right now it comes in and goes upstairs. Then it's got to be redirected somewhere. Getting that call where it needs to end immediately saves that customer that two or three hops. So they're getting, they're getting where they need to be quick.
Ryan, second question I had was, I noticed on the utility statistics, though, that we have an increase in, I guess, all the number of customers on all the utilities. These sections, TV. Is that kind of something we're seeing as a trend of new people coming into town? Or is there something good news that we can celebrate?
You know, we're seeing more in the telecom area, the increase in customers, but not a huge increase.
But that's small increase, even on electric and water and everything, so I would think that would be a positive.
And I think that there is a subdivision.
We're seeing some movement on the residential side of real estate that we haven't seen in four or five years.
Glad to see that trend.
We have a, we have a meeting set up with the new owner of the subdivision on BRLA. And that's, that's great to hear.
Thank you. Renee, quick question. Didn't we start the extensions this time last year roughly?
We did, and in the stats, it goes back. We started on, in January of '13, we had 123. And in February, we had 77. Then it started climbing from then on.
Don't we plan on kind of getting together soon? When you have time and analyzing them.
We've pulled that data.
Yeah.
We don't have it in a real, in a real concise thing, but I've got some overview data that Mike pulled a few days ago that I really haven't had the chance to sit down and look at, but it's a
But, you know, it seems to be working. Obviously, if it's climbing, you're not having more to default, because the more that default, we don't allow them to get another extension for a year, so.
Yeah, it looks like only 5% default on their extension, but I'm just wondering how it relates to
I picked out two out of the data, the raw data that I was looking at that had used it every month since it's been available.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is only 5% or so are defaulting on it, but how is it affecting overall cutoffs? You know, based on what we used to do? Cut off or not payment, 230?
Yeah, it's
Is that what, compared to?
No, no, because, well, it was 304 in December, but if you look back, in August, it was 217, 360 in May of last year. So I don't know that it's helping the cutoffs, but it may be giving people time to, you know, rather than just struggle to come with the money, maybe, I don't know.
Obviously, it's time to kind of look at it.
The biggest problem that I'm seeing with the people that are reusing it every month, it's not actually, if you look at it, it's really not helping that customer. It's putting more cost on that customer. They're paying every month.
We're charging what?
What's the late fees associated with it?
They get the late fee. What we'd really like to see them do is take advantage of the partial payments that we allow them to do. If their bill is $400, pay $100 a week if they're needing to pay on time or to, you know, to stretch it out.
Probably charging for the extension itself. Are we?
We are not charging, no, we don't charge
Not that I know of.
We had talked about
I think it's an education process, me and Renee talking about, that maybe with the trees being on staff now, we can kick that out. If you pay on time, you're paying anyway. Because the customers that I looked at, the four or five that I looked at, they're using it nine out of 14 times that we had it available. And some 14 out of 14 times, they're paying every month. They're just paying late.
Right.
And so they're actually adding to their burden by paying late. But they're able to pay, even with that late fee, let's educate them on how to use this, this pay by the week, pay by the month, pay by the, you know, the day bill. Use that pre-deal to get out of that cycle. They're just moving their billing cycle. Sorry.
Any more questions?
Overnight.
Thank you. Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor.
Fire Department had 263 calls to the department. We had 169 events. And again, as the norm has been, of that 169, 109 have been emergency medical assist calls. Done a couple of public relations events, 346, a half hours of training. Tomorrow, the engine one to go into service, the new truck to go into service. Got all the operators trained on the operation of the pumpers itself. They completed the driver's training on the vehicle. Fully all the gears, all the equipment's put on it. We have one 5-inch piece of hose that a coupling wasn't correct on, and we got that worked out. But all this went really well. They've done a good job of getting the truck ready to go into service. So your investment of, our citizens' investment in this block, when we start, as far as fire goes, we put to use start tomorrow. You've got probably notes, the fire guys are doing a, call it an old timeless supper, kind of like they used to do in early years. But what we're kind of doing there is we want our retirees to come back to the station, you know, look at the, look at the new truck, feed them a supper like they were accustomed to eating in the old days. We're going to have some, I think, ham and black eye peas. We'd like you come, I know there's conflict with the government being in town on that day, too, but please come. We're going to have the old 19, whatever year model fire truck there, and it'll kind of be sitting on the location side of the new. So you can see how that, how that world's evolved in other years. But, any questions in fire?
Okay. Police Department, we answered 4,478 calls for service. We had 1,655 calls to the police department. 335 cases in the city court, 81 hours of training. Part one crimes are running just a tad down versus last year, if I'm recalling right. That's 74 part one crimes, 161 part two crimes. Made 105 adult arrests, 16 juvenile arrests. Most of those juveniles, if you remember, were burglary type stuff. Our trash pickup was at 740 pounds and picked up 31 tires. Ms. Rita, if you've seen them on your street, I'd need to head them back over that way.
You need to have them back over there. They need to come weekly.
We need to start catching
Some of them folks, I kind of got a plan for that, too. Any questions in police?
All right, thank you, Chief. Solid, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We kind of revamped our spray sheet, sort of to track the trend. All the data's pretty consistent. We did pick up 81 scrap tires. Still looking at, trying to find a company that can take them off our hands. It is a resource, so there are use for them. So we are desperately looking to handle that. The last thing is, the, our transit station a little bit lower. We did lose two days in January because of the weather. So it did impact the volume. Any more questions? I can answer.
We're still all current with the transfer station, everybody paying the bills?
Yeah, we're, Renee probably can answer that better than I can. Last report I have, we had pretty much covered a supplement of two customers, ran it 45 days.
What revenue is down?
Yeah, yeah, it is down.
Any other questions, Mary? Thank you. Stray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just highlighting a few areas of the report. We rented out the community building four times in the month of January. Our flight maintenance division continues to work off of preventative and corrective maintenance, and they're doing a great job of that. Our grounds crew has picked up just a little bit over a ton of litter throughout the city. Our street division is fixing to be in full swing back with our sidewalk master plans probably go pick back up within the next month, month and a half. Once we get out of a freeze time period, we'll pick back up full swing with that. We're also doing, currently, starting a, an extension of the Richard Parsons Drive, which goes out to the airport. It was I know there's conflict with the government being in town on that day too, but please come. We're going to have the old 19 whatever year model fire truck there and it'll kind of be sitting on the location side of the new so you can see how that world's evolved in other years. But any questions in fire? Police Department, we answered 4478 calls for service. We had 1655 calls to the police department. 335 cases in the city court, 81 hours of training. Part one crimes are running just a tad down versus last year if I'm recalling right. That's 74 part one crimes, 161 part two crimes. Made 105 adult arrests, 16 juvenile arrests. Most of those juveniles, if you remember, were burglary type stuff. Our trash pickup was at 740 pounds and picked up 31 tires. Ms. Rita, if you've seen them on your street, I'd need to head them back over that way.
You need to have them back over there. They need to come weekly.
We need to start catching. Some of them folks, I kind of got a plan for that too. Any questions in police?
All right, thank you, Chief. Sally, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Our, we kind of revamped our spray sheet, sort of to attract the trend. All the data's pretty consistent. We did pay around $81 scrap. Still looking at, trying to find a company that can take them off our hands. It is a resource, so there are use for them. So we are desperately looking to handle that. The last thing is the, our time during our transfer station was a little bit lower. We did lose two days in January because of the weather. So it did impact the volume. Do you have any questions I can answer?
We're still all current with the transfer station, everybody paying the bills?
Yeah, we have, Renee probably can ask that better than I can. Last report. I have, we had pretty much covered a supplement of two customers, around 45 days.
What revenue is down?
Yeah, yeah, it is down.
Any other questions, Danny? Mike, Dan, Stray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just highlighting a few areas of the report. We rented out the community building four times in the month of January. Our fleet maintenance division continues to work off of preventative and corrective maintenance and they're doing a great job of that. Our grounds crew has picked up just a little bit over a ton of litter throughout the city. Our street division is fixing to be in full swing back with our sidewalk master plans probably go pick back up within the next month, month and a half, once we get out of a freeze time period, we'll pick back up full steam with that. We're also doing, currently starting a, an extension of the Richard Parsons Drive which goes out to the airport. It was in, it's been needed some attention out there and we're starting it. Our side and marking division is it works off of work orders and as needed. And as Danny had mentioned, our reports are going to be able to see on the report itself how it transfers from month to month. So I think that'll be interesting to be able to see that in the side and markings building maintenance as well as our fleet maintenance division. Couple other points of interest, well, really only one other report was from the ice storm. I guess it was a month ago or three weeks ago. Tonight's when it really started. I've been through networking, in contact with some other cities in the area. As far as how they use their assets and compare their methods to what we've done. And we've spent a lot less money than any other city that I've talked to in the last three weeks dealing with salt and rock as far as how much they put out. I've heard as recently as today, a city with about 10 miles less, 70 miles an hour has put out almost 500 tons of material. We didn't put out a fifth of that or a tenth of it, actually. So we are, we're in really good shape as far as our assets and our preparedness for those types of events. I'll echo Brian's statement as far as thinking our safety guys as far as keeping us fed that night, we worked around the clock for three days during that event, keeping our streets passable. And I want to brag on the guys over in streets and transportation every chance they get. I think they did an excellent job throughout the city keeping everything open and safe. But we couldn't, we couldn't have done that without the rest of the departments and their help as well. And it was a true team effort surviving and being very fortunate through those events. Outside of anything else, I'd be glad to take any questions regarding this report or anything you might have to talk about.
You said street department's getting ready to go, unfortunately we're under brakes. But where should people be looking for the next street to be paved and the next sidewalk?
Well, we're going to start with patching and that's going to be, we'll use some of our L-Nig funds as well as the splash funds to go into that. That'll be determined from reports. We have some patching to do on Breatley Drive. There'll be patching and overlay done there. Some extensive patching. When they moved from the hospital, from there to the new location, there was a lot of damage done to the infrastructure there because of just the sheer weight of stuff being transported. So that, that'll be a place that we'll attack with our paving. We'll finish out East Marable, the section that wasn't done last year as well as Burke Street. Burke Street was patched when Marable Street was three years ago and it hadn't received its top layer, so that's what we'll do with that. And that's just the three that we're going to start with. There'll probably be additional as well.
Any other questions? Thank you, everyone. And water, sewage, and gas, right?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as water treatment distribution, we also see an increase due to the weather. It also shows up with the service calls and the, had 103 service calls and 30 water leaks repaired. So actually the leak you had to produce more water. Installed one new service. We answered 59 after-hour emergency calls. A lot of those were busted pipes in people's houses, neither water meters turned off. We also received the final changes to our GFA for RFP for the meter change out and that went out last week, last Wednesday. Waste water side the treatment was up just a tad. Nine work orders issued, two service calls, and 11 after-hour emergency calls. Reach Construction's continued to work on the 2011 CDBG project. That should be coming to an end, hopefully the end of next month, no later. Natural gas, we also had a record for the amount of gas sold, 58,000 MCFs. Don't disagree with Brian's efficiency. Gas is much more efficient. 77 work orders issued, responded 25 gas leaks, installed one new service. Now those 25 gas leaks or the gas meters or the gas appliances were working so hard, they started to smell some of the fumes. Nothing was, you know, but any danger. We also continue to monitor our grade three leaks and repair the leaks throughout the system. And as far as the gas, the training facility, we held 10 classes, 214 attended and also got a six-month, the schedule out for the next six months. Got any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Okay, no questions for us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move into committee information. Does finance have anything to say?
No, we don't have anything to say.
Okay. Airport?
We have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, public workers?
Yes, Mayor, we have one item, the discussion or RFQ recycling.
Well, I'll just kind of take that and then we'll let Danny lead into more of that just outlining the RFQ. But basically, if you recall back at our budget retreat, we discussed potentially putting out an RFQ for recycling services. Danny and I have worked on this and of course, it's at the attorney's office now, but Danny's going to touch on some of the highlights just for your information as far as what we're going to be looking for, for services if we decide to outsource the service.
Thank you, Matthew. Our primary goal, biggest goal is to increase participation. And obviously like you said, Monroe, we're still trying to maximize the amount of divert going to the landfill, of course that reduces disposal costs. And the polls are pretty much speaking on how to do it. We are increasing the amount of material that would be collecting. It's one way we're supposed to do. Another way is to increase the size of the container. We're using the 18-gallon container, we would use the 65-gallon container. It will keep the material clean and be more profitable. Another way is to expand the businesses. We have multiple family due places that are not participating. So that would include those customers to participate and also schools and other institutions. So we're really just trying to capture as much of material and generate as much material as we possibly can and that's pretty much the primary way to do it. The industry, trash, the new word for trash is resource. And 90% of what goes into a building or landfill can be used again. So that's, that's the main goal for this proposal. There's some specific requirements for the potential service provider. Look at the requirements in section five in the document. That paragraph 501 pretty much spells it out. Every response, all super big regional material, it had to be an approved recycled container, equipment, labor, the containers, we still have City Monroe label and heat stamp. And of course, you know, it comes probably with City Monroe if they can't meet the requirements. So the only, the biggest impact you'll see is the increase in the participation. We got a higher awareness, but we are our participation is right at 22 to 25%. State still require us to at least reduce that, reduce the weight per capita. They removed the 25% requirement back in 2005, but they still require that we really reduce the amount of waste that goes into the landfill. If any, if I have any question I can take.
We just added that too, Danny. Basically, for your understanding everything that is not recycled goes through our transfer station, therefore adds to that tonnage that we're having to pay for the current provider to haul it out. So in theory, what we're doing here is trying to increase recycling, increase awareness, therefore lowers that tonnage into our transfer station. Now you've already heard that revenues are down at the transfer station, so we want to try to decrease expenses as well and we feel like this might be an option to do that. And you know, again, we're still, we're crunching our numbers as far as what it costs us per customer, per month to offer the service. We feel like, and we've had some indication that outsourcing it would lower that cost. So it's always worthwhile to explore. You know, we discussed it at the retreat, so we're just following up on what we're talking about.
Okay.
This is later.
Move into utilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mel Brooks?
Thank you. Yes, I'm asking for approval to send our instructor from the Utility Training Academy to this conference. SGA Spring Conference, it's something that we do every year. We go with the vendor. So we'll send one guy, I think last year it ran us about $1,000 for the room and his meals and the conference and all. One reason we want to continue to do this, we have cities from South Carolina that actually attend our training facility for gas training. So we want to continue our presence there at their conference as well as the one in Georgia.
I move with, through that, if you have to take to the county.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We will recommend that, county. Thank you, Mayor, and that's all.
Thank you. Public safety?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a committee meeting on February 25th and I'll let the chief go over that.
Thank you. The first item we talked about was a Manning document that, most of it's housekeeping. What I'm asking is that the committee forward it to council for approval, it's revenue neutral. Some of the things in the new pay scale, it just with me, I need to do some housekeeping and just reorganize a few things. I asked the committee to approve it and pass it on to council fashion.
I'll offer that motion.
One question. There are three things we discuss, we do it one by one or?
Yes.
The only thing that needs action is the Manning document. The vehicle policy, I'll take next, but it needs no action at this time in the committee.
I second it.
All in favor?
Any opposed, bring it to the full cap. Now I'll take the vehicle policy. That was also discussed at the committee meeting. We did do research and the most recent policy that we had for take home vehicles for department heads for police officers, whatnot, dates back to 2000. So next week, we're going to bring for you an updated policy that incorporates utilities as well as the general fund as a whole. And so we, I don't have anything as far as example tonight, but we're still working on the update of that policy.
You're going to bring it next week for approval?
Well, that's just, we're going to try to have it out. We're going to present it and we're going to try to have it out to you before the end of the week. Of course, the attorney needs to look over it and everything, so we're trying to merge some policies together, some other cities do.
Is this policy citywide or is this just for the police department?
It will be citywide. I don't think we uploaded our current policy, which dates back to 2000. I think it still names a rep director and whatnot. So there's just some, again, it's just some housekeeping there that we need to update the policy.
When you're getting there, information, if you could include, please, how many vehicles is this going to affect? And kind of mileage and stuff as far as how far we're driving these things. Thank you.
Mayor, you know, you addressed something that even though it's a citywide policy, I think there might be some distinctions between departments and in use because there again, the police department is under a whole separate set of laws governing use, you know. And so it might be, need to be detailed enough to cover And so it might be, need to be detailed enough to cover the difference.
And the, excuse me, the, the current policy like I said, dated back to 2000, it, I believe it lists individuals, but I mean you don't want it that detailed, just more by department as far as a radius or defining who will take the vehicles are.
And while we're looking into this, don't we have a no smoking policy in our vehicles?
Supposed to.
I bet we need to just double check that and make sure that that is still ongoing. There's actually no tobacco. I've got tobacco at all. I don't think everybody's quite adhering to that. We're going to change vehicle policy and make sure that stays in there.
Any other discussion on that? Next one is fire up there?
Really, and probably with fire, we talked about, talked about the new truck, which has been a, been a good project, has been a project that we had a lot of input from the, the officers, you know, captains and lieutenants and we actually sent the lieutenants out to Alabama where, where it comes in and where it's kind of upbeat with a lot of the stuff because those are guys that are on the scene and make sure, you know, the equipment's readily available and I think with the time changing this weekend, we'd probably have the truck here if we don't have too big a crowd, but maybe some things with the weather, it's decent, the general night would like to look at. I feel like we've gotten a state of the art apparatus, as firefighter we call it, and we're real proud of that. We also talked about standardizing the fire helmets at this time. All your full-time guys have a standard headgear that they wear. They have standard, standard fire boot that they wear and their safety equipment, it's not four or five different types of equipment anymore. That's, that's basically what we talked about. I think, I've been real pleased with, with the, what I see and the direction we're at right now. So that's, that's pretty much what we, what we talked about in the meeting. Mr. Richardson, you recall we had a thing we talked about, but
That pretty much covers it done. That's all we have, Mayor.
Public safety. Okay. Thank you. DDA?
Make a comment, she makes all the more. I just saw the New Georgia Connector magazine, which has a, an ad in there from, from downtown Monroe that really emphasizes all the new businesses that opened in downtown Monroe in the last month and, and some better be coming up in the next couple of months, which is a really good ad. I just wanted to compliment that, that ad I've had, it showed Monroe is ready for more.
Thank you very much. Yes, that was in the, it just came out, so you might not have seen the New Georgia Connector. And what we did in the last issue was the article on why Monroe is a great place to do business. And so that one was, this was nicely positioned following that to show that we have a lot of new openings. We actually listed six new businesses that have opened since December and we have at least three more that I know of that will open in the next couple of months. So there's a lot of great momentum in downtown. We only have a handful of empties, empty spaces now, which is very good. And honestly, it's just a huge advantage for our DDA board to have someone in a position end of the year and be able to start early with a plan, raise support. We, we elected Lisa Anderson as the new DDA chair and everyone's excited about going forward and we have very specific goals for this year. One of the new ones that you'll see soon is the banners in downtown, the holiday ones that are still up now, old winter, the winter ones, it's still winter, so those are still up, the snowflakes, but we have other new ones that will reflect our updated branding that says Monroe downtown. They'll just be our base set of new banners. And so the green ones will be retired, let's say our town. So we're for those, we're excited about that. And we also just got these actually today, our two target postcards for this year. I have these over here, please grab some on your way out. These are all of our annual events that downtown sponsoring and it said as a postcard, we choose to do a direct mail or something like that, has a map of downtown public parking back. So we're excited about that and we also, this is what our organization committee is out there trying to raise support. And this year, what we've done with it is we've listed our major projects and where that money's going, so we're looking to understand, one, what the city, the huge support that the city offers to make downtown possible and then where we look for local businesses and individuals to step up and help the special projects happen. So hopefully this gives some clarity. Also list just in 2013, the things we're able to accomplish. So we're excited about that. And for January was a good start to the year for DDA and soon you'll be seeing the events kick back up and we'll be into our summer, our summer concerts, the summer farmers market, and it's a great season for downtown.
Could you comment on the pocket park?
Yes, so glad you mentioned that. This past Saturday, the Eagle Scout project was finally completed and Jordan Kinsey installed three benches and coffee tables into the pocket park. They look very nice. We also had a local group that's wanted, that wants to sponsor planters and support landscaping with the pocket parks, so that'll be coming together. And then Accolades has offered to do a plaque, kind of tell a little bit of the history and then get some of the key volunteers to help make it possible. we use that over the holiday season. It was a nice addition to the events to have activity there, kind of in the middle of downtown. We'll continue to use it with the special Olympics parade at the end of, end of April, end of March, sorry, I think it's March 29th. The Monroe Junior Women's League is having an Easter bunny in the pocket park for free pictures of kids. So, and that was their idea and so I love to see it being used for community benefit.
Also, if you want to touch on the concerts, that's actually an item of discussion, but we do have those contracts.
Yes, we have those contracts. I'm going to continue to review those. There may be some slight changes to them between now and next week, but we have bands lined up. We are only doing four concerts this summer because July 4th falls on a Friday. So that's a great opportunity to go with bigger names that everyone loves and always request and get those in and have big successful concerts to do less but do them well, do them just higher caliber event. So four concerts, one is a rain out concert from last year that's coming back at a reduced rate. how we're able to get the bigger, some three bigger name bands with staying under, staying the same price range for our concerts.
All right, we move on to items of discussion coming up next week. I'll have the 2013 Resolution Budget Amendment.
It really just, some housekeeping, I kind of touched on it in my report. We had, I best I can remember about three departments that went over their budget for various reasons and were able to just rearrange within other departments to cover that, that overage, so I'll just need to get those amendments, housekeeping.
We'll have a discussion, approval of vehicle policy, second reading of the Domestic Animals Ordinance Amendment, second reading of the Garbage Collection Ordinance Amendment, resolution for Georgia Cities Week coming up in April the 13th through the 19th. Have a discussion of approval of 2014 Concert Series and discussion of draft code ordinance.
And that, Mayor, is of course our city attorney Paul Rosengold, as well as myself and Patrick will be really highlighting some of the ordinance changes as well as releasing some dates for some town hall meetings for public comment. So we'll do all that, so much busy next Tuesday.
And Mayor, on those two second readings, we'll also be voting on those, that is correct, right?
That's correct. And that looks like that should end the meeting with no other business. We need a motion to adjourn.
Same.
Motion by Michael Sack by McDrake Cock, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.